Good evening and welcome to the September tenth twenty four meeting of the town council at six P M our regular meet. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'd ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on all the events going on throughout the world and at home. And with tomorrow being September eleventh to reflect on that as well. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being reported by LCAT. And if there's anyone else in the audience, if you can identify yourself. Seeing none, uh, public comments.
Ralph. Um, so I asked Jeannie if she would put me on tonight under public comments instead of council comments. Um, this is more coming from me on a personal level and not a counselor. Um, so at this time, I'd like you to hand those along. Um, those go that way. Um, so it was brought to my attention. It's time it's brought to my attention um, a while ago. That not everyone in the town, the community, um, town hall staff. Knew that I owned a landscaping business. That had been deemed to be preexisting and conforming. And so at this time, I'd like to read into the record. Um, a determination that I received back on April second, two thousand and nine. From the building department, uh, Daniel E. Hellier was the building commissioner at the time. It says, Mr. Ralph Page, P O box one, seven, five, East Long Metal Mass, oh, one, oh, two, eight. This is in regards to page landscaping. Dear Mr. Page, I reviewed your letter dated December twenty seventh, two thousand and eight, requesting continuance of a legal business. That has been in existence prior to the nineteen sixty-two zoning change. Considering that this business was started prior to the act. Prior to the enactment of our zoning bylaws and has continued to operate. Affords you the right to operate as page landscaping at one thirty-seven Peace Road location. Uh, if you have any questions or concerns regarding my determination, please contact me at five, two, five, fifty, four hundred. Uh, Daniel E. Hellier, the building commissioner. Um, you may ask, well, why are you reading this into the record? So by reading this into the record, this is preserved forever now. This will become part of our minutes. Um, a copy of this, um, I had assumed would have been kept in my file somewhere. Wasn't able to be located. Um, I kept a copy of it. But now I've presented a copy to Jeannie, um, I presented a copy to each of you. So that going forwards. If somehow it disappears in ten years and I'm still operating a business, we have something to go back to look at to say, oh, wait a minute. Yes, this was done, um, this was accurate. And that brings me to the next point. Um, and that has to do with the town and the digitizing of town records. It is so important going forwards that if we get the opportunity, get a grant or anything to digitize our records. That we consider doing as many as we possibly can. Um, well, once they're digitized and kept on file. Then there's no chance. And again, when I say losing. When you keep a personal file like this. I believe thirty years ago, the town had a flood in the basement and tons of records were lost. Um, those are lost forever. At least if we're able to digitize them. I'm hoping that there's not a huge crash in any computers or the cloud, but for the most part, they're kept indefinitely. And, um, like I said, God forbid any natural disaster or anything like that. If all our files are lost, I mean, between wedding records and death certificates and all, I mean, it's crucial. And so I would just urge as a citizen, the council. Whenever they have a chance to do some digitizing to do it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Uh, under public comment, is there anyone else in the audience that would wish to make a comment before the council? Seeing no one online or in the audience, we will move on to council comments. Counselors with a comment.
I'd just like to say I had missed the meeting, uh, last month, but I did want to thank, um, Don Mackey on his service. I not only got to see Don as a town councilman as playing board member, but I, uh, did, um, his course. We did, um, interviews of different candidates and things, and I did that for a semester my senior year. Um, I think Tom said it really well when I watched the meeting back, uh, he is a conversationalist. He is one of the best conversationalists and there were so many, um, really great conversations that we had. And he was an important part of my senior year, which was probably my easily my favorite year, um, in high school, um, or none. Um, so I just want to congratulate him on his retirement, um, and all the service that he did in the community and how much he, uh, impacted, uh, you know, my interest in continuing on and being interested in government. So.
Great. Thank you. We will move on to the town manager report.
Good evening. Uh, so, uh, welcome back. Uh, school, uh, is open. It's fun that we have a special meeting of the school committee joint meeting tonight. Uh, this is how I'm going to open the manager's report, apparently. The, the, obviously, the, the new school year kicked off, but, uh, kicked off with a sort of a collaborative effort, um, from multiple departments. These are sort of my favorite things that happened when, uh. We had, uh, the police department, fire department, school department, D P W, uh, Fontaine Brothers. Um, uh, all working together to make sure that the transition, obviously, with the construction at the high school. That everybody was safe, both buses and cars dropping off and pedestrians and cyclists and, um, so. Uh, I just want to thank everybody involved. Um, everything went off without a hitch. We had, um, officers there. Um, it seemed like, uh, there were no major issues reported, so, uh, I just want to, uh, well, welcome back everyone and I'm glad everything, uh, went off well. Um, I also, um, just to keep you guys updated on everything that's going on, um, and the public, because we post the manager's report tomorrow. Uh, I think Dad waits till tomorrow, just so I don't mess anything up too bad. Um, so she can change it. Uh, but, uh, that we get weekly reports from our, uh, owner's project manager. Um, it's really kind of a detail of what's gone on the last week, so we get them weekly. Uh, I'll end up giving them to you with every report, um, so that you can sort of stay up to date and ask any questions and, um. Sort of, we'll just keep it, keep it rolling as long as that's okay with you. We out of our, uh, the fiber of the home project is really, uh, starting to, to, to move a bunch. Uh, most of the design is done. We are. Uh, we're in the, the process now with the utility companies, which, uh, gets a tad cumbersome. As you can imagine, uh, we have to put an application in every pole that we want to attach to some thirty-eight hundred poles. Um, and then thirty-five hundred with Verizon that weren't joint owned and so, um. It's, it's a lengthy process. Again, it was part of the whole first phase here with the design. And the applications that are, are being done by, uh, Whip City Fibers team. Um, but we're really starting to sort of see the ball starting to move here. Um, in order to get to this next phase where. We find out how much it's actually going to cost to build out the system and what's our best crack at rolling this out, whether that's phased. Um, which is most likely, uh, to start generating some revenue so that we can pay for the next phase. So, um, we'll have, this will start to become clear towards the end of this month here. Um, certainly, uh, at the beginning of October, that design will be done and we'll have a full estimate of what this is going to cost. So within the next month or so, we'll have, uh, some answers to our questions and some really big decisions to make on how we want to move forward. So, um, that's, 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 this is getting really exciting. Um, uh, congratulations to our, uh, new LCAT director, Jamie Rupp. Yeah. You did a good job embarrassing Don the other night, so we can embarrass her tonight. Um, obviously, Jamie's been serving, uh, as assistant director for quite some time here, so, uh. She's, uh, we met, uh, shortly after. Uh, we figured out, you know, Don had picked a date and, and so we met shortly after and, and, uh, I wrote this sentence down and I'm just going to read it because. Uh, her talent is really only matched by her desire. Um, so a- as hard as it and sad as it was to say goodbye to Don, uh, it's going to be equally exciting to see where Jamie takes LCAT from here. Um, so congrats, uh, Jamie. Uh, I'm really looking forward to working with you as well. Um, I, I think we're going to see some fun things out of LCAT moving forward. Um, the police, uh, union recently voted to ratify, uh, the agreement of their new contract to become effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Um, we only had, uh, I think, four meetings, um, and we were able to successfully negotiate a contract. Um, satisfactory to both parties. Um, this agreement will run through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, we're working on finalizing the language and that will sort of come back, uh, in front of you again. Um, but I just want to say thanks to, um, everyone involved. Uh, it was, uh, for, for, for collaborative and swift, uh, bargaining sessions, which I'm sure if you read the news, it doesn't always happen. So, um, thanks to everybody. Um, Board of, uh, Westcom Board of Directors met jointly with, uh, Westcom Operations Committee on Friday. Uh, to discuss their annual assessment outlined by the district agreement. Um, and to start discussion on the F Y twenty-six budget, uh, which has to move a little more briskly than, uh, us. The, the budget has to be into, uh. Into the state nine-one-one by, uh, mid-January in order to get all the funding and grants and all that stuff in for the state budget. So, uh, we, uh, I, we didn't. It was a kind of a marathon of a meeting. Uh, it went about three hours, so I don't really have much of an update on the building. We didn't really get to that. Uh, but we are moving along. There's been, uh, an issue or two, nothing outside of what you wouldn't expect on an eighteen million dollar full renovation building project. Um, some things were found when some things were removed and, um, so nothing crazy. Uh, we are watching the clock on the electrical switchgear as well, which is pretty much every project right now. That seems to be the biggest lead time is electrical equipment. Um, so, um, I'll, I'll continue to update that, uh, on the building projects. Um. Uh, we're under contract, uh, with V H B to complete the feasibility study for the extension of the rail trail, which I know everybody's excited about, uh, from Maple Street to Westwood. Um, so we, we, I just signed that contract at the end of last week. Uh, we expect in the next couple of weeks to have survey out there and, uh, sort of some, some early, early work. And again, thanks to Mass Trails for, uh, uh, for the funding in order to sort of. Complete this end of the project and, and again, it seems like, uh, I, I know everybody knows the process now, but we're getting these estimates together. For a reason, so that we can sort of plan on how to do the construction, which is going to be, uh, you know, a significant investment. Um. Center Town District Committee hosted, uh, Andre LaRue at Brew Craft Fishers on August twenty-ninth, uh, to talk about forty R smart growth development. Um, Andre volunteered his time, uh, and gave an informative presentation, uh, recorded by LCAT, by the way. Uh, there's a link on the manager's report, um, but it's on the YouTube channel. Um, the next, uh, steering committee public engagement will be October twenty-first, six to eight. And did you pick a location right here, uh, in the big room at, uh, the council on aging? Um, I also want to special thanks to Rebecca Lisi, the deputy town manager for securing Andre. Um, he volunteered his time. She did all the legwork to get him here. Um, I think for everyone that was there, it was very informative. Uh, it sort of shed some light on some, some issues that people, uh. Had heard or thought about forty R that, uh, you know, weren't true and or were, were different from what we've heard already. So, um, I thought he did a great job and thank you for securing that again. Uh, check that out on YouTube if, if you have time. Um, so, uh, pursuant to recently enacted Affordable Homes Act. Uh, I asked the town attorney Jesse Belcher Timmy to do some research, um, on the obligations imposed upon the town. Um, there's a memorandum here, um, attached to the manager's report. I'm happy to read into the record if you want. Um, if not, it'll be posted with it online, but, um. The town staff has already begun, uh, sort of crafting or and or brainstorming on how to create this bylaw. Uh, for the, the act becomes effective February second, twenty twenty-five, which, uh, you know, based on our bylaw process, uh. We got to leave three months for that, so we, I mean, realistically have to have a bylaw wrapped up before Thanksgiving at, at the latest. Um, so we, we've already got going on that. Um, I don't know if you, um, if you want me to read that memo into the record or if you don't think it's necessary. Um. Um, so upcoming events, I, I forgot to write it down. Again, Ed will, uh, Deb will edit that in. Uh, the September eleventh ceremony, um, at the fire department tomorrow night, eight o'clock, Paul. Um. That's quite a race. Just setting a reminder. Uh, it's, 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 it's really a, uh. Sort of a, uh, I don't know the adjective to use, but it, it's a beautiful ceremony. The, the fire department does a great job. Um, obviously a somber topic, but, um, very, very nicely done. Um, if you haven't been, I recommend that you go tomorrow night. Um, it, it. Again, it's a, it's a, it's a nice ceremony. Um. Coffee with the town manager, uh, October second, uh, ten thirty at the C O A. Uh, the Rotary, Rotary Club's doing Celebrate E L again, uh, center field, October twelfth, eleven to four. Uh, third annual Oktoberfest, uh, October nineteenth, twelve to four at Brown Farm. Um, and, uh, again, the Center Town District, uh. Did I change the date on that? No, the twenty-first, is it twenty-first? Okay, thank you. Uh, the twenty-first from six to eight here at the, at the C O A. All right. That's it. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Being none, we will move on to communications correspondence and announcements. And our first one is the September third, twenty twenty-four state primary update.
Thank you. So, uh, my report usually starts with numbers, um, and you've got all the numbers for the precincts, the, uh, the official results. And I'm starting off with, um, our numbers for early in-person voting. So there is a week and a Saturday aided by the state based on our population for early in-person voting. And we were open Saturday, nine to four, and then the following week, or nine to five, then the following week, eight to, we had one hundred voters walk in. So not a great turnout. And to set up early in-person voting, it's almost like you're setting up a mini election poll like every day. Get there early, get the ballots there, lock up the ballots at night. Uh, we stay after four to make sure all the ballots that were, um. Cast that day had been recorded into our voter registration system, so it's not a great turnout. It wasn't, there was only one contested race over three parties ballots. Um, however, when you look at one hundred voters that show up over six days, the vote by mail numbers again are increasing. So. Over twenty-eight hundred, twenty-nine hundred people requested vote by mail ballots for this election. And you hear me talk about the postcard applications that started coming from the state in January. So anybody that checked off all elections automatically would get a vote by mail kit sent, sent to them in the mail. So there was requested over twenty-nine hundred that we had to send out. We got fourteen hundred back. So that's quite a lot. Um, when you look at the actual number of voters, which was one thousand eight hundred ninety-one, almost fourteen percent. Fourteen hundred of those are vote by mail ballots. And the hundred early voters, so that means four hundred people came through the door all day through the polls. So vote by mail increases the turnout. It's a lot of work. We handle those ballots many times during that time. Um, but it does, it does increase turnout, but the early in-person voters seem to decrease. It was a good election. Again, I'm praising my assistant, Jackie Sullivan, my staff, my election workers, the schools, the custodians, the library for letting us use their, um, conference room for early in-person voting. And I'm so grateful for that, and it was almost like a dry run for November. What are we going to do in November? We're going to have two weeks and two Saturdays of early in-person voting. We're probably going to have twice the amount of vote by mail. Every time there's an election and you did not request a vote by mail from the previous one, you'll get another postcard from the state. Or people will just request them online. They can do it online. We have to check a portal every day for that. Or they can just do a paper ballot, um, application for that. So, um, we're already waiting for the ballots for November. October nineteenth, we start our first day of really in-person voting. Um, however, we are, we have to send out twenty-nine hundred, so that's a lot of work. So as soon as we get those ballots, I'm going to just keep going to November. So, um, I don't know if you have any questions about that, but.
What are you doing in your free time?
Come clerk, clerk of the council. We're going to have liquor license renewals coming up at the end of the month, so. It's a busy time. We knew twenty twenty-four was going to be heavy election year, so we're, we're almost done. Three down, one to go.
She has to ban me from her office.
You can fit in my office.
Great. Thank you for the update, Jeannie. The next item was, as Tom mentioned, just a reminder that tomorrow is the September eleventh candlelight vigil at the fire department. I do have a couple other additional announcements as well. Um, also tomorrow night, slightly before the candlelight vigil, the Lions Club is holding their distinguished citizen of the year. Award for Paul Federici, who used to be and still is quite active in town, but was a former counselor and select member. Um, and that's held at Mario's Cafe at six o'clock, if anyone's interested in attending that. Uh, the legislative update that we had mentioned at a previous council meeting. I had worked with the, our three legislators and they were unable to attend our meetings since September, but they will be here on October eighth. So if you have any questions or anything you'd like to bring up with them, can send that off to them in advance. And then the legal update executive session, since Anna wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, we'll do that on the twenty-fourth. All right, moving on, public hearings, we have none, so orders of the day licensing matters. Our first item is to discuss Herrera Incorporated doing business as Torito Mexican Restaurant at six twenty-one North Main Street. So I'd ask for this to be on the agenda. Jeannie had brought to my attention that there were a few outstanding issues with the licensee. Um, to my knowledge, the few issues and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm missing any. That they had changed their doing business as name, which requires both the council and A B C C approval. And also would require the planning board to amend their special permit. Um, they also put up new signage without the permit from the planning department. And then amending the special permit for outdoor dining since the special legislation that the state had enacted had previously expired. On April of twenty twenty-four. Um, given those issues, I thought it was relevant for the council to discuss that in our path forward. Especially considering other license actions that we've taken recently, and I thought it was appropriate that we apply a fair and consistent pattern. Everyone, so.
Connor, they are here from the restaurant.
Right. If there's, if you want to come forward and speak to any of those issues.
I hear you.
So could you come forward to the table?
They are due.
And if you could just state your name and address for the record as well.
Okay. Um, so my name is Eldier Martinez. I'm just a translator for, uh, Mr. Luis Palio. Um, just, that's the biggest issue for why some of the permits haven't been done lately, just a language barrier. Um, but we are working with that. I was just with Jenny yesterday trying to get the, um, D B A done. And we're working today for the signage, the permit. Um, we're just missing a couple of things. Uh, the other issue, you said, uh. For what was that then, third part?
So there was the, the change in the doing business as name, because it previously was Torito.
Yeah, that's the D B A we worked on yesterday, Jenny.
Then there was the, the new signage to correspond with that name, which also requires approval from the planning department.
Yeah, so we didn't, you didn't think we needed, um, a renewed permit for that? Well, we are working on that and one more thing after that.
And then the special permit for the outdoor dining.
The real patio. Oh, the patio. Yes, yes. So we are also working on that. Um, I think it's issues with, uh.
Planning department.
Yeah. And stuff like that, but we are working on that and we do apologize for. Um, you know, holding up till now, you know, trying to get things done, but it's just a lot, it's just language barrier. That's it.
So the fact that he can also manage the plan. The guy who we're talking about.
And the engineer.
See, but we're just trying to manage the plan.
All right. So Mr. Lewis is also telling me that right now we're just waiting also for an engineer to send us the plans. Um, I guess you all need some plan. Uh, patios.
Planning board will need plans.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would have to get submitted to the planning board and the planning department for that.
So we are with just for that.
Um.
Alex is working with them on that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, but other than that, I mean, we do apologize for that. Yes, sorry, you know. Just a lot of things, but, um, it's just language that right now and.
The two questions that I would have, and then I'll ask if there's any other counselors that have questions. One would be, do you have like an estimated timeline on when you're hoping to get all of those things done, like submitting the?
Um, plans should be done by before next month.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I don't know how long the D B A takes, you know, to go through. We just sent that in yesterday. Um.
So I'm reviewing it. Um, there was one document missing, but I was able to get that from the Secretary of State's website. It doesn't require public hearing change of D B A, doesn't require a butt of notifications. So if it's an order, that can go on the, um, your next agenda. They also have to change the D B A with the planning board, though.
Right.
I believe, right? The special permit includes the D B A name.
Yeah.
So.
If it's planning made before us next.
But doesn't matter. They've got.
I don't even think they're ready to submit to planning, though, to submit on.
Okay, they missed that for the next meeting for sure.
Yeah.
So once you would approve the change of D B A for the A B C C, it still goes to the A B C C. But that's, I think, minor compared to the deck.
Right.
Situation.
So, um, I have a question. If this hadn't been called to your attention in the last week, that you have, um, overlooked these important things and taken steps on your own to, um, assume you didn't need to do anything with the D B A. And you put up new signage and you've known for several months that you couldn't use the deck until you asked muster with the planning board. If that hadn't been called out to you, um, would you have taken the action on your own to take care of all that?
Sorry. Um, so I believe Luis Palau, he's, uh, he's been taking action. Um, not too long ago, uh, he had someone helping him. He supposedly did the D B A, you know, and tried to get everything started. Um, so that's why he didn't, when it came to his knowledge, you know, that it's becoming an issue, that's when he started, you know, trying to get into it. That's why he asked me for help, chanced late, you know, but. He knew about it for a while. It just, he thought they were working on them. That's it.
First, I want to say I appreciate the fact that you're, uh, your willingness to be a translator, um, for the owners. But, uh, it's important for the owners to understand that you're being given a license to serve food. And serve alcohol. And those are two licenses that this town takes very seriously. Uh, as somebody, as Connor mentioned a few minutes ago, over the past several months, we have taken away a license from. An establishment because they didn't comply. Previous to that, we issued discipline to another establishment because they sold, um. Uh, alcohol to underage. And a third, uh, licensee had to go before the A B C C for the same, uh, venture. Um, so I'm here as the chair of the licensing committee to tell you that you have three strikes against you right now. You didn't file paperwork for D B A. You've already got a new sign up. And the issue of the deck has been outstanding for several, several months. You're operating that deck illegally. That sign, that signage is up there illegally because it hasn't gotten the proper approval from the various departments. And, um, I'd like to make a recommendation that until all of this paperwork is approved through the various steps. And the A B C C that, um, the owners be prohibited from using the deck going forward until the matter is settled. And that the, uh, issue with the signage, which is up. And that the uh issue with the signage, which is up there illegally, be covered. Um and consistent with um our uh regulations. I would ask that we alert the uh police chief that his officers actively enforce. That these measures um are being adhered to.
Is that a motion?
It was a long one.
So further discussion. So if I may ask, our town clerk um did, was a. Permit applied for during the COVID extension for outdoor dining so that they could use the outdoor deck?
No, and Ralph's talking about is through the town manager, there was a temporary um. Guidance put through by the state that you could use outdoor dining on a temporary basis, you wouldn't have to fulfill all the criteria of the regular code. And you would have to apply for that. They didn't apply for that. And then that temporary advisory expired April one. So anybody with temporary outdoor dining had to go for permanent alteration of premises for permanent dining. And the A B C C actually made it easier for the local licensing authority to approve that. But they hadn't done that, and I've been in constant communication with lawyer representing the owners.
And currently with the planning board, if I remember right, there was, the deck was not supposed to be used for outdoor dining.
I knew that.
That was from the former operator of the former restaurant. It was supposed to be a smoking deck.
And that carried through.
Evolved into a dining deck. And they probably could have done it temporary had they gone through the proper channels during COVID. To do the temporary dining outside, and that was done so people could be for when they dined, um be in open air, so.
So currently, they're not supposed to be using that deck.
Right. But I think there was an issue with the. Extension of the deck, that there wasn't a permit. Yeah.
But I don't believe it's the, it's that's not these owners.
Right.
That portion was taken care of, but.
Yeah.
What I understood is.
Yeah, none of it got properly addressed by planning.
In front of us, they, well, came in front of the planning board, they understood that they weren't supposed to use the deck. Um so I just wanna verify that and make sure that you understand that that outside deck is not supposed to be used. Or outdoor dining.
Alright, um if you don't mind. We also said the um sign has to be covered.
Well, that that was my recommendation, it has to be voted on.
Okay, okay.
No, okay. Has the deck been used like up until like the last couple of days or in like yesterday, as you know, has this continued to be a? In use up until today?
Yes, yes. One additional question, um I know that there were multiple Torito restaurants across. The state, more out east and out in Western Mass. Did those also change their name? As well, or is there a different change of ownership as a company?
So I guess it was just legal issues. Um I guess there was no Toritos in a different state and they're just. I guess we're like taking their names, so I guess there was like a case about that, I guess they lost it. So we had to change the names to what is now. But there's no new owner or anything like that.
So then all of the ones that are owned by the same company in Massachusetts are changing all of their names collectively?
Oh, we don't know that. We don't know that. Um we're just. He's just there for the Islamer one, just Mazatán.
Okay.
So the motion again was.
To prohibit the use of the deck and to cover the signage until all of the. Um until they're in compliance with the with the planning department and any other de- but building department. That built, that deck has to be inspected. Um until they're in compliance with all departments, which is the same threshold that we hold all of our other. Licenses too, so we can't make an exception now because the sign is up or the owner misunderstood. That, you know, what he could or could not do.
Is there a second? Marilyn seconded. Is there any further discussion?
It's pretty reasonable and targeted to the current.
Given the nature of that, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Jim?
Uh yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
M A S?
Ralph?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Thank you. So until further notice, until all of those things are complied with, the sign has to be covered and there's no outdoor dining permitted.
Alright, I understand. Apologize about that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Right, other licensing matters.
I can just interject, but Jeanie or Tom, I don't know who.
Sorry.
No, who who will follow up, but to let Chief Williams know to have his officers. Um you know, enforce that, particularly the deck. They need a few days to get the sign covered, obviously. But um definitely no use of that deck.
Okay. Other licensing matters, we have approval of a one-day liquor license for a high school reunion. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple, forty-three Chestnut Street for a high school reunion. On September twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, from five to ten P M.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We also have another one-day liquor license for a birthday party. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple, forty-three Chestnut Street. For a birthday party on September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, from four P M to ten P M.
I will second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, we will move on to financial matters. It's the approval of donations. Is there a motion for the acceptance?
I make a motion to approve donations made to the library and council on aging. Totalling nine thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. As presented per Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. The one further discussion point I would add is just thank you to. Individuals or organizations that contributed, there was quite a lengthy list for all of those amounts that added up, so thank you to all of them. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great. We have C, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve our August thirteenth minutes?
I make a motion to approve the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four open session minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. And then old business, we have the hazard mitigation plan for a required second reading.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mimi Kaplan from Pioneer Valley Planning, uh our contracted consultant that helped us with this whole project. Did all the work, Paul. I'm another committee member. There was, there was a lot of discussion, but before I forget, cuz we were supposed to do it last time, um if everybody could just sign. Uh we have an agenda, and that's everybody in the room, I guess. I need signatures from everybody. So if everybody could just sign this as we, as I get the projector set up. Um I would appreciate it, that cuz that's gotta, that's part of the. It's part of the official record.
I'll turn out of the slides if anybody wants.
I have one already.
I would love to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot which pen I had in my hand. Don't laugh. Thank you. First, what was that supposed to be on? He sees that. Okay. Like, how long are you gonna let him suffer? We had it running beforehand.
We can call Bill back.
Sabotaged by the school committee.
Well, did you press the world button?
What button?
World button.
Load it up.
I could barely turn on my computer.
The rescue.
She said H, she said to hit H D M I, but there is no H D M I button, there's a P C button. So maybe that's what it's doing.
Hope it works.
Your benefit, I will say you did have it working earlier.
I didn't even let my computer go to sleep, so I didn't want that to mess it up.
Oh, that's the problem. Now your computer's tired.
It's our point that.
Yeah.
How was it, the watch button? Press the watch button.
There is no button for watch, so it's just on or on.
Don't have to.
Still paying.
The PowerPoint. I have it on my laptop, but that's not gonna help, right? And on a flash drive.
Let's see. It's funny, we can get up in the corner.
Many people does it to.
Yeah, there's a joke, there's a joke in you. Oh, boy.
I can do it on my cellphone again.
Turn it off and turn it back on.
You wanna join Zoom and share your screening?
What's that?
And share your screen, screen.
What, can you put it up there?
Oh, it will be up here.
Can do that.
And there's handouts.
Let's just do that.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming early and setting it up. I hate when things don't work. A couple minutes. It was literally just.
I saw him, he was all excited.
Even in play.
Send you the invitation or great.
So? Sorry, Mimi.
Okay.
Can't all go smooth, Paul.
What's that?
Can't all go smooth.
I get it.
Part of the hazard mitigations. If something's on fire, I can put it out. Well, there's always that.
That projector were to burst in.
Yeah.
It's loading.
What's loading?
My email. I sent it.
I got it.
They'll leave.
I didn't. I was just getting my list back after being.
Can you mute yourself? Or turn your sound off. Now you're a panelist, so you should be able to.
See his computer.
Alright, do that.
It's on the bottom here, screens here.
Yeah, there's a little green.
I think everybody has it.
The audience at home, it's nice.
Do this.
Here we go.
Yeah, you were best.
Give it a round of applause.
Alright, should I start then? Everybody see it? Alright, um alright, so thank you for having me tonight. Um as Chief Mars said, said, Mimi Kaplan, Senior Planner at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So I've been working with the town since I think May of twenty twenty-three on this plan. Um and this is the second of two required public meetings. Um just to give you an overview of the plan, which is um being completed. Draft plan, um and to get any comment from you or from the public and um. And then submit it to FEMA, and we will be just about done. Um so next slide. Uh so thank you to the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee, everybody you see listed here. Um they came to all the committee meetings, and I think I told, I said this last time, we had a hundred, hundred percent attendance every time. Um they provided data and information for the plan, assisted with stakeholder engagement. Um identified and prioritized mitigation actions for the plan and reviewed and commented on the draft plan. Uh next slide. Uh so FEMA defines hazard mitigation as any sustained action taken. To reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property from natural hazards. And so some examples of mitigation actions would be things like limiting development in high-risk areas. Like floodplains, for example, uh retrofitting structures to protect them from hazards such as floods, high winds. Earthquakes, uh drainage and flood control projects, and then education and outreach like fire safety education. Next slide. So there are, sorry, you know, I think I need a sip of water.
Dry in here.
It's in the air.
Alright, hopefully this will be better. Uh so there are a number of benefits of hazard mitigation. So having an approved plan makes the town eligible to apply for funding from FEMA for the next five years. Um mitigation helps communities prevent future future losses and save monies on, save money on disasters. So FEMA has done some kind of studies and uh that show that every one dollar spent on mitigation. Can save six dollars on future disaster losses. Uh makes communities more resilient to natural hazards and the impacts of climate change. Um, inque- increases awareness of hazard and risks through education and outreach. Um, and in the case of any extreme disasters, um. Next slide. Uh, so the com- the components or contents of the Hazard Mitigation Plan um, are basically what are listed here. So the first chapter just explains the whole planning process. Um, this is all, it's a very, uh, FEMA requires it exactly. Way, so. Um, then, um, the next chapter is community profile, explains the town's demographics, infrastructure, natural resource, et cetera. Uh, next chapter, hazard information and risk assessments. So going through, uh, explaining, uh, every natural hazard that could influence, impact, uh, the town and assessing how much of a risk each of those hazards is. Um, mitigation capability assessment. So that's where, uh, the plan explains what are the capabilities the town currently has for mitigating hazards. And I'll explain these a little bit more in the next few slides. Um, and then mitigation strategies, that's kind of the heart of the plan. So um, all of the mitigation actions that, um, the town could potentially do in the next five years to reduce the risk of all of the natural hazards that we will talk about. Um, and then finally, plan implementation and maintenance. So hopefully this plan won't just sit on a shelf there, uh, that the town, the committee will make sure that some of these actions are implemented and that the plan is made. So that's the Hazard Mitigation Plan in a nutshell. Um, so the timeline and process, um, there were five committee meetings. I think we met from May through September of twenty-three. We had the first public meeting in October. Um, I completed the draft plan and there was a review period this summer. Took me a little longer than I planned to complete the draft plan. Just were very busy at PVPC and a little bit understaffed, but. Um, so the second public meeting is right now. Um, revising the plan based on any comments tonight and then submit the plan to Mima and FEMA. Normally they have, uh, they require some revisions. They're usually very minor and they don't take very long. Um, but it can take them a long time to review the plans. So hopefully it won't take more than a few months. Then once FEMA approves the plan, the town council adopts the plan and then the plan is official for the next five years. Um, and you can apply for funding from FEMA. So this is the natural hazard risk analysis. The committee, um, updated this from the previous plan. So went through every, um, natural hazard listed here that could affect East Long Meadow and determined what the location of occurrence is, meaning how big of an area of the town, um, could it affect small, medium, large? Um, and based on previous events as well as any available data, projections for climate change, impacts, et cetera, determined what the probability of the natural hazard occurring in the next year would be from very low up to very high. Um, and there is a methodology in the plan that explains how they kind of came up with these, um, and then determine the impact of the natural hazard from limited up to minor, uh, or critical or catastrophic. And then based on all those, assign a number to each hazard from one being, um, the highest risk to five being the lowest risk. So, um, they determined that severe snow and ice storms, severe thunderstorm and high winds would be the highest risk to the town. Followed by flooding, hurricanes, extreme temperatures, um, and then, um, tornadoes, sorry, and then wildfire, brush fire, earthquake, dam failure and drought, uh, the lowest. And again, this is just looking ahead for like the next five years. So, you know, it's possible that in ten, twenty years, things change. You know, these, the frequency might change, the severity might change. But, you know, we, we don't, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. Um, next slide, yeah. Um, so the existing mitigation capabilities I was talking about, these are examples. Um, and these are all, uh, written in the plan and big table. Um, things such as zoning ordinances, bylaws, building code, existing plans that address hazard mitigation, like the Emergency Management Plan, the OSRP, that Open Space and Recreation Plan, um, the Resilient Master Plan, um, having a culvert prioritization plan. Uh, NFIP enrollment is National Flood Insurance Program. Um, there's only eight policies currently in town. Having a burn permit requirement, a cooling and heating center for extreme temperatures and/or power outages. Um, tree management to reduce power outages from limbs and trees falling on power lines. Um, fire safety education for childrens and seniors, um, and emergency communication. So that's not everything, but those are a lot of the important ones. So town has a lot of existing capabilities. Uh, so the actions, the mitigation actions fall into four main categories. First one being local plans and regulations. So any types of regulations, policies, et cetera, that um, would reduce, uh, the impact of hazards on land and buildings, uh, structure and infrastructure. So any projects that either improve existing infrastructure or build new infrastructure that could reduce the impact of hazard, like replacing a culvert or a bridge. Um, natural systems protection, those are actions that preserve or restore the functions of natural systems in order to reduce damage or loss. So that could be like open space preservation. Uh, so that lands could absorb flood, floodwaters, stormwater, um, for example. Um, and then education and awareness programs, uh, programs to educate and engage the public about hazards and mitigation actions and any opportunities so that the public is aware of what's available in terms of, say, like heating cooling centers, um, and also just knowing what the risks are and what they can do themselves to mitigate risk. So those are the categories. And then, um, so I, I didn't include every single mitigation action. You can always look in the plan if you want to see all of them. These were all the high um, and medium priority mitigation actions. So seeking funding for culvert replacements and implementing those, that's always a high one, every, every municipality. Um, installing emergency generators at the high school, posting online and also sending out information about extreme weather preparation to town residents. Um, increasing enrollment in Code Red as well as the School Emergency Alert System. Uh, improving drainage for mosquito control and increasing education about mosquito-borne illnesses. Uh, enacting regulatory updates that would include low-impact development and green infrastructure strategies that would, that would help to mitigate flooding. And then, um, becoming a firewise community, which is a program wherein the town assesses its wildfire risk and then makes an action plan. Is that right? They got that right?
Yep.
Just, just to reduce risk from fire. Um, and then also along with that, maintaining, um, the existing trail system that's in an area of concern of the town for wildfires as these can act as fire breaks. So that's, um, that's it for the presentation part. Um, and if there's any comments or questions about the plan, about the planning process, about natural hazards or climate change impacts in general. Give it time.
Any chair, of course. Um, I'm just curious as far as, uh, the concern for wildfires. Considering East Long Meadow is pretty much a swamp, do we really fall into?
So.
Are there any areas that?
Yes, there's.
Show concern.
Um, give it to George Kingston. He, uh, he, he was one of the ones who commented on the first public meeting. So myself, Deputy Beecher met with DCR representative, DCR representative in the area. It's the area between Kibbie Road, Hampden Road, um, Stone Hill, Burnwood, and then the Pleasant Street or the Porter Road area that Kibbie are, um.
Campbell.
Yeah, exactly. That Campbell property back there and the power lines, um, heavily wooded. Um, hasn't been forested in years, um, and I think it's about three hundred acres. I think George calculated it out and Mike, with Mike Ray's help, I think it was just shy of three hundred acres. And he told us there was about a hundred and seventy homes that border it all the way around. Um, so. Yes, it's, it's, it's damp back there in several spots. I grew up, I grew up in town. I know the area pretty well. Um, we've had one, uh, significant brush fire back there, probably in the late nineteen nineties, um, which was by Hoover's, was, it was pretty extensive just to get in there with equipment and stuff. Um, our operations haven't changed much per that, but we, because we don't have a lot of areas in town, we, we don't really prepare for that. But our neighboring communities, Hampden, Wilbraham, Long Meadow, they all have, because they all have a lot more um, wilderness, they have the equipment that we, we mutually with them on a regular basis for other stuff. So we are confident we can get in there and do what we need to do. Um, but again, if we get to a point where there's severe drought in the future, um, we may have more issues. One lightning storm could go strike it, um, or something like we had back in the late nineteen nineties. Um, it was kids, it was four kids. They were charged. Um, they were out there playing in the woods and decided to have some fun. Um, we, we, we don't have a real issue with that in town right now, and we're gonna hope it stays that way. Um, but, um, it is an area of concern. I don't see it turning into what you see in, um, in California and Oregon and, you know, Utah area. Um, those are just devastating and we don't have, we don't have that kind of issue. Uh, but.
Well, I do know the area you're talking about extremely well. The beavers got in there about ten years ago. So at least the lowlands under the power lines, it literally standing water now.
Yeah, but there was.
And there are areas like.
Right. If you walk into the, from Brown Farm, you can go a decent way and there's no stand, there's no water. Yeah, that's, we went in that way to the power line and, uh, it's from the bri. Yeah, and it's, and there's a lot of duff on the ground that the um, DCR guys, you know, you know, that's where the fire is gonna run. Um, and, and you get a few dried pine trees. It just makes it explosive in a windy day. So, well, I mean, again, it's you talk about, you know, maybe getting a Boy Scout troop out there to maintain the trails as an Eagle, Eagle project. Um, become a firewise community, which involves going out and meeting with the neighbors, telling them, you know, your, your shed, you need to clear, clear around your shed with leaves and, you know, brush and you know, you don't have mulch, you don't have real mulch in front of your house. You have stones. Um, things like that, cause any, any little sparks that drop in them is, is what's gonna start it up, so.
It goes half my business.
Stone, stone route.
Stones only once every five to seven years.
Well, in the landscaping business, I didn't know.
I'm assuming you've got to install emergency generators at the high school.
Yep.
The new high school, if I remember right, will have, uh, the generator.
Diesel.
Yep. Doesn't run off of, uh, solar?
No.
How are we doing with enrollment and Code Red School Emergency Alert? Is that a?
I think Code Reds, people Reds over five thousand, make the number, last time I looked. Yeah, it's, it's, we're doing pretty good. I think we're, we're good, cause we don't send a lot of test messages out, which tends to have people unenroll. You know, um, you know, in, in the, the town departments that do use it, they don't, they don't send it out.
Early voting starts tomorrow, Saturday, October nineteenth.
Yeah, I mean, you, you always, you always hear the towns that just send out everything out and we, you know, storm updates, Bruce is really good about making sure they send something out about parking and, you know, you know, the important stuff with that and, you know. I, I think it's, I think we're heading in the right direction.
Sorry, I was gonna say, it feels like sometimes, yeah, it's used so widely, like that year we had the October snowstorm and a tornado, and then there's other years where fortunately we don't really have any emergency. Situation.
I mean, you, you think about it, before that tornado hit in the area, how many times any of us saw a tornado in the area? I mean, early nineties, maybe when it came through Bradley, down by Bradley Airport. Um, but it's so historically, we're not an area for tornadoes, but now every year we get a couple of tornado watches and you know, it, fortunately, they're not like the one in two, two thousand eleven. And then what, five months later, we get that snowstorm. I worked that night. That was, that was not a fun night. That was, you were, I'll probably do, that was not a fun night. Um, it was dangerous, actually very dangerous out.
Um, the culverts. I know we replaced the one on Porter Road. I believe there's one on Elm Street that replacing or going to, um, how, how in-depth is our list and what do we need?
So the list was, was that the MVP grant? I wish Bruce was here. Um, we have all the culverts listed and assessed. And now we'll just have to, I mean, it, they're not, they just fixed the one by Franconia that they could do in-house. But the, the next one on the list was Spade Arden, and it was on the, um,
Yes.
Capital Plan. But we don't have enough money in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund yet to do the project. Um, but that's the next one on the list.
I mean, it's a pretty in-depth list. I, I don't know how many culverts are in town, right?
And yeah.
High area, Lee Street, these really.
Like everything else, the, the deterioration seems to be faster than, um, you know, most of these culverts are very old at this point, and we're really just now starting to pay attention uh, through all this grant stuff. Um, so yeah, there is quite a list, nothing in imminent danger, of course, uh, or else that would be on the top of the list. Um, Spade Arden is, is, uh, damaged a little bit. There's three, three tubes, one of them's blocked and, um, there's a sewer pipe right underneath that we're worried about. So that's why that one got sort of popped up to the top of the list. But yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole, we have it all inventoried now. Obviously, uh, Mike Ray's got it all, them all. And like the inspection reports are all, if you click on them, you can get all the other information, but yeah. Um, that was through an MVP grant with Hampden, maybe four years ago.
You're ahead of a lot of other towns with that, by the way.
Oh, see?
Not, not that many towns I've worked with, and I'm doing a lot of these plans, have done a color prioritization.
Bruce has applied. I think it was at least four or five years in a row for generators for the town hall through Hazard, the Brick Program with FEMA, and he gets to the next level. He gets a recall from our Massachusetts liaison and he'll get to the next level and says, oh, you're looking good, you're looking good. Then he gets to, we're sorry. It's a super competitive process and. It's usually not as nice as that, but, um, yeah, I mean, he's, he's.
Yeah, I know he's been applying and trying.
It's, and it's just, it gets frustrating. It really does. I mean, I'm, I'm on the same boat with other stuff, but he, Bruce has done it, tried. Um, yeah, so hopefully, you know, when the high school comes in, it's already got one. We don't need to.
Right.
Need to worry about that for that, but.
Well, plus the police station, we just upgraded there.
That one is gonna start, yeah. Yep.
Sure, there's gonna be more. There's never gonna stop the list, so.
Well, I mean, it's hard to think about it, but the fire station's generator, I know the police station's was much older, but the fire station generator is is, uh, almost thirty years old now. In two years, it'll be thirty years old. Person Park right around that, right? It's twenty-five years old. Um, and quite frankly, they're not building them like they used to.
No.
Um, just ask the guy that services our generator every year. Yeah. He maintains it. He's changed the radiator a couple of times and, but, yeah. And if you want to order one, it's a long time to get it in. But we'll keep it ticking.
Any other questions?
Nice job.
That was easy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
You, Mimi.
All right, thank you.
Get the sign and sheet back.
Yeah, I think he.
I got it. Yeah, I got it. Perfect. Thank you, everybody, for that.
All right, new business. Uh, the first item is discussion of no parking signs on Susan Street and Northern Street. So this was a continuation. At our last meeting, we had discussed, um, Melwood and took action on that. But the conditions of approval for the planning board's decision for the new high school, they had also listed both Susan Street and Northern Street. So follow up on that. It'd be on our agenda to discuss if we wanted to. So, follow up on that, to be on our agenda to discuss if we wanted to take any action or.
Was there was that decision on the, by the planning board based on when the new school is up and running? Or currently now are people like they were doing on Melwood, parking there to wait for kids to get?
So, if if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, this is a sort of a less of an issue at this particular moment.
All right.
I think it's less of an issue, so I misspoke today, that we have no parking areas now from Susan. To the end of Norton and from Susan to the end of Barry, because both of those streets dead end. And so people park and walk over the hill to watch the game. There is no site access on that side of them, you cannot get. That's why we had to go through that whole exercise to get kids to the high school up on Maple Street. We had the the police details, that's sort of what I referenced at the beginning. There, you cannot get into that site unless that gate at Norton is open, and that's only open by Fontaine. And then closed, so. And 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 I don't remember specifically, but I don't think too many people in that neighborhood were complaining about parking. Right now, or or in the past. Obviously, somebody did at some point, or else those two little stubs wouldn't be no parking areas. So, that one wasn't one that we needed to hit the gas pedal on, nor do we still. And and again, to be sort of. Use the same process, I'll certainly, if you want, send letters to the to the people on that street before we start. Telling them they can't park in front of their own house, if it's even a problem, right? I mean, we did that for Melwood, I think we should do that for for anyone else.
Because what's proposed, if I may. Focuses on, you know, traffic before school and after school.
You're right.
And if they're not. And if it's not happening there, if there's no access, do we need that specifically?
Yeah, so the whole conversation, I guess, I I when I, when I see the traffic sort of rules and regs. Recommendation in the planning board decision, it ultimately has to come to you anyway, so no action was really taken in that back area because that wasn't an issue. I don't know why, I can't recall the whole conversation at Planning Board, and if they were worried about. The proposed site, Norton is going to have three accessible parking spaces, and that's it. And I think they're probably wondering or worried that when the site is complete.
Right.
People will pull down there and be like, geez, I can't park here, and then they'll just throw in park and walk in. Which is, that could happen, but that's not for two and a half years, three years. So, I I don't know how far we want to take the recommendation of the planning board, and I don't mean to use that word, except. I think if they want a no parking area in their decision, it still needs your vote. Because you're in charge of rules and regs, so it sort of needs you to take that recommendation and and take action if you see fit. I don't think this is an issue personally, and it certainly isn't. While that fence, construction fences up, because nobody can get anywhere anyway.
Right, so through the chair, I I would be up to table this at this time. One, they can't get in there, it's petitioned off, so so even if someone is to park on the street. They're they're parking there, but they're not going to the high school. And I would like to see us wait until such time that the high school opens and see if there's actually an issue there. I think with the new driveways and all, and the new traffic pattern. I I think this is gonna be a moot point, and until we see something. I would, I would suggest to table it. I mean, I'm looking at the back streets there. On Melwood was a little bit different, you're coming out onto a main road.
Right.
At best, I mean, you've got to back up twenty cars in order to even get to. Marshall, thank you. And even at that, Marshall's really not a main road, it's not like Maple Street. That would be my suggestion, but again.
I tend to agree, I think we don't really know what the future's gonna look like until the construction is all over and. If there is actually gonna be a problem, and even if there is a problem. It, we may need a different recommendation and solution for that.
Exactly.
Than what might be proposed for us.
Exactly. Doesn't appear to be an existing problem with those neighbors, so I mean, unless that suddenly changes. And, yeah, I think it, I think it makes abundant sense to just keep it as is. And the Melwood situation, I think, is a little unique. You know, we we're not in the habit of, you know, limiting parking on tons of streets in this town, it's usually for a very specific reason, it seems like.
So if we're on agreement, we can take the matter under advisement and reconsider it in the future if it becomes a problem. Next matter was discussion of the solicitation bylaws. So I had a resident reach out back on August fourteenth, mostly in relation to solar solicitation. Seems to be in certain neighborhoods throughout town more prevalent that people get. Knocked on doors all the time from different companies trying to solicit their business. And he was wondering if there was anything that the town could. Be assisting bylaws or regulations, and he'd also done some additional research and pointed out like Long Meadows. Bylaw on that as an example as well. So I had looked at what we have on the books, we had chapter three ninety three, considers. Also had chapter three forty two, hawkers and peddlers. Long Meadows was much more significant in scope and detail and exceptions and all sorts of stuff on that. Tom had also provided to me. Some additional context too from our town legal counsel as well. And that gives me a little pause about considering. Changes in the sense of making it more restrictive, or trying to be more crafty about it in the sense that. A lot of communities, potentially including ours. With any of those sorts of bylaws, both the US Supreme Court, but also the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has ruled that. A lot of these different things are unconstitutional in terms of preventing people from soliciting, because it's a violation of their free speech. Rights, so I, doesn't mean we can't examine if there's things that we can or should change, but. I don't know how crafty and creative we ought to get on that matter. I do understand that it is an annoyance.
Yeah.
But I don't know how much of an annoyance, and in terms of violating people's rights.
This came up at a town meeting years ago. I don't know the the actual specific scope of it, but quite simply, it had to do with soliciting. And when it got to the point that Girl Scouts couldn't sell Girl Scout. Action at all. So, you know, I don't know what that would restrict, I mean, depending what we do, how far does it go?
Right.
So.
I was just gonna say, it's definitely, I can understand an issue for like older folks that, you know, clearly from this email, this constituent, you know. It happens, you know, and but most people usually can just chew them away, and I've had them come to my door, I mean, they're pretty like, once you say no, not interested. You know, they may come back, somebody else might come back in a few weeks, but like, you're not gonna get like this harassment. My concern with this Long Meadow bylaw that they have, I mean, there's certain even restrictions on like. Political speech and that type of thing, and I I think we should be really careful about if we were to consider anything like this, you know. People have a right to, you know, go door to door for political reasons, for selling a product. Obviously, there should be some reasonable restrictions, but I don't think it is in, frankly, the government's interest in just. Restricting or putting on more rules and regulations that, frankly, I don't think are a huge problem, unless there's. This massive problem with solicitations that I'm not aware of.
I knocked on a lot of doors. Signatures and and it was really a very positive experience as soon as I knew why I was there.
You know, one of the things that's not being allowed to, you know, drop literature, and I mean, that's a popular thing that. All types of political campaigns or issue campaigns do, you know, somebody might not be at home, so. I just, I understand sometimes people find it an annoyance, but, you know, people can just simply, you know. Decline it respectfully, and, you know, we should be able to run by those rules unofficially as a as a society and as a town.
More to curiosity, what does the enforcement look like and what's the penalty?
Uh, on our current ones or on like Long Meadows? I think ours is not more than fifty dollars, I think it said, and. So I can't remember how much more there's might have been, but. But, yeah, I mean, I think that's the the big elephant in the room too. Rule changes we come up with is.
Right, and enforcement is when court cases happen.
Know that well.
Most of these hurt me differently, the only thing I would consider is. There's an issue out there more for, you know, for seniors, people going door to door and some type of scam related type of. But I haven't seen or really heard of anything in terms of people soliciting and trying, you know, scam of, hey, I got a. A load of wood chips, like it's Ralph going around scamming people. I can give you a deal right now, that type of thing, but I haven't really.
Yeah, the driveway stuff. Yeah, your neighbor's having a driveway and I've got extra asphalt.
That's where like public service announcements could come in handy, and I know like there's been seniors that have been. Or people that have received calls that are bogus calls, they're trying to sell you something or, you know, so I think it's important that. Making sure people have those awareness that, hey, there could be these scammers.
So currently, our bylaw, if you're going door to door, you're supposed to receive a badge or some. Have people been doing that? Have they been registering?
Not to my knowledge.
So, so we already have a bylaw on the books that. People are breaking and we're not enforcing. Enlarge it or anything. You're just gonna be writing stuff on paper, and if we don't enforce what we have, we're not gonna enforce something else that we do. And I think maybe part of that is just knowledge to them, that they probably don't realize that they need a permit or a badge to do it. And so they just go up and knock on doors.
I can't wait till this conversation I get to have for the next person that knocks on my door. No, but again, I don't, I don't mean to. If I'm an officer, maybe I don't even know that this bylaws on the books, right? So, maybe, maybe we, maybe we. I I can check in on the house to house piece of it. I think Jesse was opining, we had received a bunch of complaints about panhandling. Which is sort of in the same bucket, no pun intended.
Guys didn't have hawkers and peddlers license.
Right. But again, the the.
First Amendment.
It's the First Amendment, and they, they're on a public, they're actually, they're not even. Our thought was they weren't even on the public way, but even if they were, it's hard to enforce. Sort of unconstitutional, but if you're talking about going on private property, door to door. And we have a process for that, that's not being followed, surely that we can look into that, because I don't think that's infringing. On anybody's right to walk up and down the street when we have a process that prohibits it. Without, we don't prohibit it, we just have a process they have to follow. That that seems reasonable, maybe that's something we can chat about. That's, that seems reasonable, totally. I'll I'll talk with Mark and or Steve about that.
And it may be something that we don't need to take action on it now, but knowing that we have to do the bylaw review starting in January. We could reconsider those two sections to see if there's remaining relevancy or if they need to be modified.
Or they need to go, or they need to go if if we're gonna get ourselves into trouble trying to enforce them. Okay, great. Yep.
The next was the MGM five-year lookback study. I didn't have anything in particular on that, just more as an agenda item in case anyone got any particular. Questions or comments or thoughts on it. The one thing that. Essentially summed it up at the end of it was the last two paragraphs that essentially said that there basically was no determination of. Impact they could find to surrounding communities, including ours.
And so the only comment I would make on it is. During the five-year period, we had what, two and a half years of COVID. So it's truly not a five-year look back, I mean, the casino was pretty much closed down and stuff, so. Although I know, you know, by the rules and all, they had to, but ultimately. I don't think our town's affected. And even if, even if it was five bustling years of it, I don't think we would be affected. I haven't seen anything. I don't know through the town if there's been any. Increase, I haven't noticed an increase in traffic, but.
Slight uptick in traffic on North Main, but we only know that because that was in the baseline study.
Right.
There is, I think, if it's mentioned in there that there is a traffic study still ongoing. There was, for instance, we sort of had to have the conversation to get one of our grants, which was the. The feasibility study for the sidewalk in Maple and Westwood, and we had to explain that. Most people going from Esau Meadow to the casino are going down Maple to Commerce. And I don't think they had any data in the original traffic plan on Maple and or Commerce, is that correct? Nothing on Commerce, so I think they're trying to piece some more information together, but even the traffic increase on North Main, which. Got us a bunch of our grant money this time was one percent, one and a half percent, I mean. That's from, you know, some of that's from everybody having to drive their own car because of COVID. Not taking the bus because of COVID, so, you know, who who knows where the data is gonna go or where it comes from, but. I think the overarching point is it didn't have the impact that they thought it was.
Which is overall a good thing, because it means there's not a lot of consequences that we're trying to mitigate.
The money.
And then our last agenda item was the executive session minute review. So this is our biannual review of any outstanding executive session minutes that had previously been retained. And whether any of those retained ones should. Released upon request from anyone published, so there's the. Recommendation before you, if there's a motion to approve. Unless there's any questions.
Any promotion to approve the recommendations as submitted to us?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
I just had a quick question, when something is forever. Sort of cataloged away, what's the sort of maybe the determination of that? Like, is it just because of the subject area?
And at some point, if someone. They could appeal to it, at that point, you take a different look at it, but. Yeah, our attorney basically said he recommends that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Great. Action items for next meeting. If you had any questions for our legislators for October eighth. And then we have our next meeting on September twenty fourth. And we'll also hold the executive sessions. At that time.
Thank you, sir. Just laid up who. Where is Jake gonna be here and?
It should be Jake, it should be Angelo Pupolo and Brian Rush.
Tyler, do you want them to send those through me? Any questions that council members might have?
Sure, if you want to send them to genie, that's.
One special meeting on this.
Or do the email chain with their.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we can just send a motion to adjourn.
I just want to say, when we're done, I want to say something personally, so don't leave.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Great, we are adjourned at.